I can wait for you.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mark. Sorry.
Would you like to stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice. Roll call please.
Karen.
Yes, here.
Clark.
Here.
Hudson.
Yes.
Rankin.
Yes.
Whitmore.
Here.
Item number 4. Take a motion to adopt the agenda. Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Rankin.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Whitmore.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 4, principals reports. Can we move the principals reports this month because we have Mrs. Shorchen who's doing some work with Senior Night tonight, Senior Night has changed due to his delay in schedule with the weather, and she is currently helping out, assisting in working and running and leading our cheerleading group, doing fantastic jobs. We'll go to principal.
My principals report is in your board chair, and again, I noticed with our new system that you have to hit enable editing for it to look correct on your page when you open it. Under curriculum and professional development, literacy collaborative trainings continue. Teachers get 40 hours on their own time to meet with Mrs. Strohacker after school. Those are planned on Tuesday evenings. We will have a visit in April from Ohio State University, the literacy collaborative trainer that trains Mrs. Strohacker is coming for the day. The kindergarten readiness assessment is going to be replacing the CRAWL, which is currently a kindergarten readiness assessment in literacy, and I am registered tomorrow with Mrs. Doda for a live webinar from 2:30 to 4:00, so I'll have an update next month on what it's all about, what the changes it entails. Our standards-based report card has now come to a point where the whole school has implemented the new Ohio learning standards, so it needs updated and aligned, and we're currently going to be working on that. In fact, tomorrow at our staff meeting, we're logging on and seeing how those look. One person from each grade level's been working on updating those. Under Race to the Top, our next meeting is scheduled for February 26. Under student achievement and progress, the second round of teacher observations and evaluations began this week. Intervention assistance teams continues for at-risk students. This year, we purchased a vendor assessment for student growth measures for math, and we purchased the Star Math System. I didn't know this when I purchased it, but it also is a gifted identification tool, and if kids score in the 95th percentile rank or above, they're identified gifted, and we did grades 1 through 4, and seven students have been identified gifted in math. The OAA, kids that scored advanced in the fall will be tested in March by the gifted coordinator from Mahoney County ESC, and I have 21 students taking that test for reading and cognitive ability. Congratulations to the following 5th grade students who will be participating tomorrow in the Southside Middle School Spelling Bee. This was one of those events that I didn't want 5th grade to have to miss because geographically they're at Dixon, so they will be coming over. Their parents are picking them up at Dixon tomorrow and transporting them themselves over to the Spelling Bee, and that will be Katie Crisp, Maria Castanzo, Destiny Colka, Zoe Yarber, Emily Smith, Madison Yeney, Brianna Yurkey, Hannah Clark, and alternates Zoe Finsley and Maris Barbado. I also brought a plaque for you to see. The 4th grade girls participated in the Latonia Basketball Tournament, and they make a big huge deal about GPA, and every girl on my 4th grade team had a 4.0 GPA, and the announcer at the game said it's only happened twice in 13 years. So I feel really proud of them for that. It's heavy, so be careful. Parent teacher conference on Thursday evening. I have 47 Dixon students that are performing in Annie at the Main Street Theater, not this weekend, but next weekend and the following weekend. Forty-seven Dixon students are performing in Annie. What's that?
That's awesome.
That is awesome. Under health and wellness and community outreach, we have YCU nursing students come in under the direction of Jill Rankin, and they did hand washing lessons with every classroom. Fourth grade honor murals will continue. Aiming High continues. Our Jump for Heart kickoff assembly was February 1st. This fundraiser raised last year, I believe it was $4,000. This year, the goal's $5,000, and we've already raised $2,000 online for American Heart Association. And I'd like to thank Danny Clancy and all the PTO that were involved in planning the gala. It was a very nice evening. I would like to thank the American Legion Post 290. They donated $530 toward our Dare t-shirts and certificates. And PTO for the upcoming Valentine party. Next meeting for PTO is March 5th. I have some dates there for you that might be of some interest. I also, in the Dixon folder, there's a newsletter for February where you can find more details about all the going on. And I'll just go ahead and excuse myself, if that's okay. Thanks. Where's my plaque?
Should we stay in the call?
Southside Middle School, good news report. Starting off with some student programs. We had the Geography Bee on January the 15th with the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students participating. Geography Bee is something new to me when I came to Columbiana, and it's really a, I'm into lots of Spelling Bee, but Geography Bee, it's really amazing how much some of the students know. This year, the championship round had an 8th grader, Matt Davis, and a 6th grader, Travis Cross, going head-to-head with a written answer question session. And after three questions, the boys were still tied and had to go to a tiebreaker. Travis Cross was the overall winner and would want to take a written test and submit that to the National Geographic Society. So congratulations to Travis Cross for winning the Geography Bee. Student council was active and sponsored a 6th, 7th, and 8th grade dance on January 31st. We had good attendance at the dance, and kids had a lot of fun. And once again, we try to have some dances in the middle school, so students get a chance to go and attend a dance. So when they go to high school, they don't not go to dances their first couple of years because they've never been to a dance, get some used to going, and so they take advantage of that as they go on to the high school. Science Fair, we had the Science Fair on February 7th. Best Science Fair, I believe, we ever had here, thanks to Mrs. Marsco, who took over the Science Fair. We had 84 participants, and we actually had two high school students that wanted to come down and participate in the Science Fair again, Jen Hayes and Emily Hassan. The following students received the highest or superior ratings, Hallie Nysley, Sidney Madden, Morgan Bradley, Emily Hitchcock, Joshua Boucher, Grace Hammond, Carissa Trangise, Julia Ham, Gabby Vivo, and Madison Mosher. We also, with the help of my friend over here, the head janitor, we got the old cafeteria in the middle school, which we haven't really been using every day, we got it all opened up, the back door, and from 1:45 to 2:45, we had the community in, and it was amazing how many people, parents came in and looked at the, what the students had done, and we had a great turnout as we opened that up to the community. So thanks to Mr. Moreno for getting that back in use for a day. Spelling Bee is scheduled for tomorrow, and at 1:15, if you'd like to come down to the high school auditorium to visit the Spelling Bee, it's always a lot of fun. In March, Southside Middle School will be hosting a regional DI competition on the 8th of March on a Saturday. Southside Middle School students also will be participating in academic challenge competitions throughout the month of March. Like to also point out, we have very high academic standards, but our second nine weeks, I thought our students did an excellent job as far as their grades. Our distinguished honor roll, which means basically straight A's, you may have one B and still be distinguished. We had 13 6th graders, 16 7th graders, and 18 8th graders with distinguished honor rolls for the second nine weeks. And then making the honor roll, which is a B or above average, we had 26 graders, 26 7th graders, and 19 8th graders. So with our standards and what we expect out of our students, the students are doing a very good job, working very hard to get those types of grades. In sports, we're ending up our seasons this week. Wrestling in January hosted a tournament on January 18th, was very successful. They're finishing up their season this week with winning wrestling, moving on to state competition. Southside Middle School Boys Basketball Team, they're both finished, losing their first-round tournament games this past weekend, but our Southside Middle School Girls Basketball Teams, both of them, will be here at the Columbiana High School Gym on Thursday, playing for championships. Both our 7th and 8th grade teams have made it to the championship game. They'll be in the high school gym with the 7th grade playing at 5, and followed by the 8th grade. So we're hoping to get two first-place trophies this Thursday. As Mrs. Shorchen said, evaluations are continuing. Important dates, tomorrow will be the Southside Middle School Parent Teacher Conference Night from 3:00 to 9:00, and you're all welcome to come in and walk around, see the building, and speak with the teachers if you would like. That's our report for the month of February.
The high school report, under technology and curriculum, we just converted over to Google Apps, and so we've kind of had a two-pronged attack trying to get the staff used to some Google tools, and there's a bunch of different tools that we can use through Google, and also incorporating that into our daily lesson. So at our last staff meeting, we developed some goals together. The first one is that all teachers are going to start posting their substantive assessments on an assessment calendar that was created for teachers under their shared calendar, and also that all teachers are going to start using at least one Google form and using that in formative assessment. So we came up with a common goal, and they all bought in. Mrs. Misos also introduced to the staff Flubaroo, which will allow Google forms to be automatically graded. So Mrs. Misos is doing a nice job of kind of training the staff and helping students along with Google tools. Under student events, Winter Senior Night will be tonight at the Boys Basketball Game. As Mr. Mook pointed out, it was rescheduled due to weather. New NHS inductions will be Wednesday, March 5th at 6:30 PM at the high school auditorium. Kids were delivered with the invitations to apply, and they've been updating their resumes and getting ready for that. Eighteen seniors recently went to Pittsburgh for a shopping trip and to see the show Wicked. I want to thank Mrs. Malcolmson and Mrs. Ravillo for setting up the trip. It was a nice trip for the seniors. February 13th at 6:30 PM, Mrs. Waller, our guidance counselor, will have a parent meeting for topics such as high school scheduling, seniors' assignment hours program, and financial aid. We're also having an advanced placement meeting for students who are interested in advanced placement and their parents at 7:00. Under students and community, the senior class is planning to donate a section of fence at Firestone Park. That's what they wanted to do with their leftover money from their senior year, so they'll be putting up a section at Firestone. The Hall of Fame game will be Friday, the 14th, and the dinner and ceremony is going to be the Saturday, the 15th. Under activities, our band was busy in early February. We were represented, 18 of our kids competed against 848 students from 24 schools at Canton-Glenoke. We want to recognize and congratulate the following students. We had three excellent ratings, that was Seth Pro and Tanner Saxophone. Under saxophone trio, we had Seth Pro, Noah Zabo, and Tanner Pascoe. Under women's trio, we had Cassidy Murphy, Shannon Joy, and Kaylee Saunders. We also received six superior ratings, that was Kaylee Saunders on piano solo, Noah Zabo on alto saxophone solo, Lily Hawkins for piccolo solo, Briann Jeffries soprano solo, Megan Wright for oboe solo, and our brass trio, Jacob Ruffichel, Justin Moffett, and Colin Hofferberg. With athletics, our Boys Basketball, their current record's 7-11. They are number seven seed in Division III tournament, and their first tournament game will be home against Waterloo on February 25th at 7:00 PM. Our Girls Basketball, their current record is 17-2. They are the number one seed in Division IV tournament, and they will host McDonald on the 19th at 7:00 PM. Wrestling, we finished third in the recent ITCL tournament held here this past Saturday, and will be competing at sectionals this weekend at Greystone. Thank you very much. And I'm also helping Kim. I'm her DJ tonight, so I.
Superintendent's report. Okay, first and foremost, Southside Middle School Roof. I asked Mr. Moreno to come tonight. This is well beyond his recliner time, and I appreciate him coming out tonight. The nice part about having Mr. Moreno available to us is he has just a wealth of experience over the years with roofing and obviously anything that comes in the line of school maintenance. And then also having Lori and her experience in bulldozing our way into looking at how we go and move forward. As we left the last meeting, we sort of felt like we needed to look at architecture or firm of some sort before moving forward, but after getting down and looking at and talking to different roofing groups and different schools and looking through the state websites and whatnot, we stumbled upon the state procurement or state contracts that are out there for roofing. So in other words, these state term contracts are already pre-bid, which tells us a great deal about what the price is and what it's already been bid out and secured into from the state end. So we looked into, let's get an idea better for you on types of roof that we can potentially go with, and secondly, some prices that we know are already pretty well fixed because the square footage and how they go about doing that is already set. So we've coned this four different state term roofs that we looked through. Garland, West Roofing, Trippco, and Durlass. Those are the four that are available to us, and those are basically styles or major providers to roofing companies. For instance, which.
West Roofing is, their majority of work is foam. Okay, they do foam roofs. Garland Roofing is primarily built-up roofs. That's the roof we have primarily on this building now. Trippco and Durlass are the companies that come in and replace old roofing. They either go with a modified roof, they go with a rubber roof, okay? And those are the four different aspects. A Garland Roofing, the guy called me and he said, listen, he says, I am going to be priced so high, because I told him, I do not want a built-up roof, which we have on the high school, which is going to cost us, it's going to almost three quarters of a million dollars. That's, you know, he says, he didn't want to go through the procedure, and we weren't going to go that way anyhow. So he eliminated himself, so we did not get anything from Garland, okay, because of that situation. But we got quotes from West Roofing, Trippco, and Durlass, and all the products here are on the table.
And let's talk about West Roofing first, Jimmy.
Okay, West Roofing. I hope there's nothing out of the roof. Okay. West Roofing, this is a foam roof, okay? Now, there's good things and bad things with a foam roof, okay? Foam roof, they will come in, and as long as we have two layers of roof, we have two layers of roofs on there right now, and they can go over top of the whole thing, but they have to build up the parapet walls. So when they build up the parapet walls, now, we have windows in our gym, they may have to go around them, and there'll be a little more detail room. But the trouble is, their price that they gave me was a flat price, but they took out the cleaning of the roof, you know, that you have to come in and pretreat it. You have to come in and power wash it, vacuum it, dry it, and everything. It's like a power washer house or something. They get the preparation tray, but that brace is not in there. And also, if you look on that pamphlet, they'll tell you that they repairs. Now, they will go over the top of the building and shoot the building with an infrared, show all of our wet spots on the roof. All of the wet spots have to be taken out because this encapsulates the moisture into the roofing, okay? You can't have the moisture in there because it causes moisture and ruin your deck, and then you have a faulty deck, then you're going to have a deck, then you have more problems that are later on. So you have to eliminate all of that. If you look onto there, when they eliminate the deck, it's square footage to repair it, I mean to rip it out, square footage to repair it, and you know what I mean? That isn't included. So their brace, they're not going to rip the old roof off, okay? They're going to go right over the old roof, which their labor cost, I don't have enough of these other copies to give you for the other roofs, but.
We're going to show them.
Okay, but what I'm trying to tell you is, there's a lot of costs in that, that their ballpark figure is down here, but after you get the cleaning, which cleaning of the roof is $45,000, just to clean the roof, okay? And so you add that on to it, and then the repairing of things that are unknown. So you can't do a foam roof with that saying that you're guaranteed this price until they know the concealed damages, okay? Because there's too many concealed damages. After they get the infrared, and they tell you exactly all of your wet spots, how much square footages they have to cut out and what they have to replace because it has to be dry. If it isn't dry, you're a truck, okay? Because your deck, it's a steel deck underneath, you get steel and moisture, it's going to rust, and there is no way to escape the air from it, okay? I asked them about fence, they said you can't ventilate it because it's underneath the existing foam roof, okay? So, you know, that's.
Because if you remember, Scott, we had that conversation with Mr. Flynn a while back, that they did some venting on some buildings that you had, so that's why we wanted to specifically ask them whether or not, okay, these wet areas, can we just simply vent them to dry?
They will not, I guarantee, but they said they won't guarantee unless they have to have, the whole roof has to be dry, okay? Before, you know, when they, say you have a parapet wall here and it's wet, like in our hallway, if you go down that hallway along the gymnasium, that whole hallway, don't have to cut it out like two feet out or three feet out and cut it all the way across there, take all of that wet stuff out, put new down, and then put the foam on top of the new, okay? And that way, it secures us for a better lighting time of the roof and everything else. So.
So we called a district down the road.
We called Salem, Salem School.
And I talked to their superintendent, and essentially, what he told me is, eight years ago, they put in the foam roof, and they've been chasing leaks. So what does that mean? Well, Jimmy and I talked a little bit, what the part of the problem with the foam roof is, you get birds or whatnot, they find out that the foam makes really good stuff for nesting, and they're pecking at it, and that causes a problem for you. There's significant amount of fees associated with year-to-year work to maintain the warranty. They'll give you a 20-year warranty. My understanding is, after talking to the superintendent down the road, is that they felt like the money they are saving, and they're moving to Durlass, by the way, they're moving to Durlass away from the foam roof. They believe that the money they're saving will in itself, from the maintenance, year-to-year maintenance, replace parts of their roof at a time, so they're going to do sections.
Now, you see in the folders that I gave you, all of these things like, see, item 4204, now that's so much a square foot, that's like for replacing, that's unconcealed prices that aren't in there. So if you go to the prices.
They're listing it, and then they have to determine.
They have to determine the damage, okay? And so that is the big thing. It's not in there. Just their price for everything is like.
Like an house card.
This is here, okay? This is your price on there, okay? It was $229. Now, and then that isn't counting the cleaning, and all of this work isn't on there because it's unknown damage yet. Until they get an infrared, they do the infrared for you, but the thing is, once you start multiplying what you've got, you're going to be, you're going to be at these other people's figures, and you're going to, you know, and.
So the gravel, to clean that roof with the Durlass.
Yes.
That's a rubber roof.
Wait, Durlass, go ahead.
Does all the gravel have to be cleaned off the roof and everything? Who would do it with Durlass?
We'll get into all of these others as we go down, okay?
Because they're complete tear-offs, so in the next.
These are completely different.
Turn us over, Durlass, the prices that they've put us include.
Complete tear-offs.
Now, please.
Before I had to get the price, the guy said, listen, you, right now, we have two roofs on there, okay? One, they didn't put an Inso board on because we did core samples on the building. We took plugs out, we found the tube, and the second board, this is my trouble, if the second board is saturated, the insulation board, we are done.
Yeah, you got to replace it all.
You got to replace it all because it's going to show, when the infrared comes down and the whole roof lights up, then we're done, okay? So it has to be a rip-off because the way that roof is leaking now, I'm scared it just infiltrated back and went back into the building, you know what I mean? So that's what I'm afraid of because he gave me, he gave me the price, then I'm, if you go down and it says how much per square foot and everything else, you know, you got to add it here, and then you add this layer on and this layer on. So, okay, I mean, that's a primary, but I want you to know that that one bracelet that's on there for $229, that isn't counting cleaning or anything else, okay? So I want you to.
That's a foam roof.
That's a foam.
That's going over top of the existing roof with foam, that's a potential for us. Doesn't mean that we're discounting that method, that's just one method we can go with. The buildup was Garland, and they just, they don't think from a pricing standpoint, as we're looking at pricing, that they can compete with the other style roofs because what we're looking at is we're looking at price with the other roofs and the other styles. If we're not open to those styles, then Garland becomes a player in that because then their style is significantly higher. When we looked at these other three, we felt like originally, Lori, what we hear was like a little over $150,000, thought we were going to be able to get foam early on before we got some concrete numbers. So we were really excited about that potential. You know, you got to do a little bit more research when you're going out and looking at these different roofs. So before we move on to some of these other ones, we'll try and find some other districts that have used these, and they have, these companies provide us with a list of schools and businesses that have gone to these roofs, and we can get some info from them. The next two are complete tear-offs. We really think that in our discussions, that's probably what we're going to end up is a complete tear-off. So now, why don't you talk a little bit about Trippco?
Okay, Trippco gave you a second roof. Two systems, okay? Now, two systems, one of them is very easy to explain, okay? One of them is a multi, it's just like you put a regular roof on, but you're using like a tarp, okay? And it's tarp down, and then you put a laminate over top of it. There you go, right here, this is it, right here. They laid them down, and they put the tarp between, okay? And it's adhered down. Now, that's a little bit more expensive, okay, if you go that way. But, you know, I've been doing this for 35 years, and all the roofs that I found out that I've used, and we'll get to that one next, and the next two, but this building But this building, this is a modified buildup roof, which is what Garland is, wants to do, but they're gonna put four layers on, okay? And give you a thirty-year warranty, you know, on a new roof, okay? This is gonna be a, a two-layer system, okay? Of that, like, built, it's a modified buildup, so you'll have two layers, one going this way, one going this way, and then all of that, everything will be flashing around it and terminated R and O, and tarred it up. Okay, now, that is the one, that is the one price, that's this price here, okay? Let me see, let me see if I got the right one there. Yeah, that's it. This one here, yeah, this is a totally adhered rubber, rubber roof. Now, this is, they will go down and put an insulation board down mechanically fast enough to the roof, all over the roof, okay? Then, then they will put, they gotta go with it. This is the insulation that's gonna be on top of your metal deck, they're gonna tear the metal, go ahead.
So they're gonna tear the metal deck off to do the Duralast?
Duralast, both of them, both of these bottom two are gonna be taken. They're gonna be putting this down.
They're not tearing the metal deck off.
No, 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 to the metal deck, to the metal. Then on top of the metal deck, they're gonna set this, okay, on top of it, okay? But, okay.
Yeah, the spoke for.
But it has to be an R-twenty rating for insulation, so it's gonna be four inches thick, so you're gonna have two layers of this. I mean, Trinco will only put, it's, uh, let me think, it is, uh.
And so this in your hand is this?
This is.
The insulation.
This is the last one, this is Duralast, they're gonna put four inches, Trinco is gonna put three and a half inches of insulation, okay? So their, their method is, is putting two of these down, okay? And then putting a rubber roof on top of it mechanically fast enough, totally adherent, fast enough to the metal roof. And then go over top of it with the rubber. And it, and it heats, it heats already very well, it's well-heated, heat welded on the seams, so you don't have no seams or nothing, okay, around the seams. This is, I mean, this is what I've been doing for thirty years, okay, is rubber. Rubber is more practical, you know what I mean, to me.
You set them out.
You know, it, it has that whole premise, and we don't have the activity on this roof, you know what I mean? We have two exhaust fans that we might change a belt on from that roof. That's the only person that's traveling. Be, this, we modified buildup, the other one, it's, it's a little more expensive. They have to put pads wherever you're working because they don't want traffic on the roof. Where the rubber, you don't have to worry about, okay? But the modified buildup, if you ever look at one of roofs, you'll see a pad by a unit, that's a, a guy service a unit stand there, okay? And worker set his tools down or drop, or drop something, okay?
They crack a leak.
Yes, 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 yes.
They do.
But they're easy, I'll tell you what, if you have a rubber roof, it's easy to find a leak and attach it. You just go up there with mineral spirits, they give you this contact cement and any, I, I, I could show somebody in twenty minutes how to repair it. It's like repairing a tire on a, like, an old tire, like it's for me, perfect, perfect example. This is, this is fixable. Okay, now.
Like Duralast?
Yeah, now this is Duralast. Okay, that's the product there, that's the, that's the thickness of, that's the thickness of the roof.
So how many mils is that?
Huh? That's O fifty, it says over there, okay? Okay, it is white and reflect the heat. This is Duralast, this is Duralast insulation. That's only over, it's over two layers of this, okay? And the seams will be welded together in this way, okay? That way, it's watertight, the warranty is twenty years, and the warranty on this is one of the better warranties. This is what I like about this. The warranty on this is if you have thirty thousand dollar damage over here, okay? They pay, say the job only costs twenty, they will go over the price of the insulation to fix it, you know what I mean? So.
That's not prorated?
No, that's not, none of these warranties are prorated except one. And that's the foam, the foam is prorated, okay?
I talked about the tapering of that.
Uh, oh, wait. Tapered version and then there's a base. Okay, and then, and this particular, we had talked to Boakson before we talked to Duralast. Cause that's where we started this whole process. Uh, we knew that Boak was listed under the state contract, so we thought, okay, let's, let's call them. So they came out and explained what was going on and finally explained to us that, well, we're really just, we're a system that's under, we, we, we provide or are installers of this system. So then we contacted Duralast directly and then Duralast sent Boak out to do some formal work with the estimates and whatnot. So we, you know, and, and their recommendation, when, when we talked to them before, we talked to Duralast, Duralast directly, was to go with the taper, the taper gives you that.
Pitch to the drain.
Look into the drain, yep.
See, our roof's being flat, there's a lot of ponding, okay? And some of the roof is, it's, it's called, uh, not hot tar, coal tar, coal tar roof. And when you have ponding on coal tar, that's exactly it, and then, then you're in trouble. Now, this is the way they mechanically fasten it, uh, you know, your termination bar, you see how it'll come up? And then they'll terminate it off here.
Here's the taper, right here.
There's a taper, okay, they have it, so all everything will go to the drains, it will go to the drains, okay?
And they, and they put the drains in?
We have the drains and they took their elevation shots from there to the drains, okay? And it's gonna be one eighth inch per foot fall. So it, it's a gradual fall, okay?
Yeah, so you're going, you're going about two to three foot, right, once you come to the sun.
Right, right, when you got a, when you got a forty-foot building and the drain is in the middle, you know, it's tapered and then. Yeah, but I wanna show you.
You're always gonna have ponding with a flat roof.
Yeah.
With a tapered roof, you're gonna have less ponding, okay? Now.
You're gonna funnel.
Yeah, yeah, now, see, on this, on this part here, this gives you the taper, but I want you to note, notice here, this company gives you a voluntary discount, okay, here and here, on, on top of the price, okay?
So we need a discount for that?
No, 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 no. Every contractor has a little bag under state purchasing, like a discount, okay? Yeah, they have that on there too. Everybody gives you a discount, but, and dealing with a local person is so much better, you know, right, right now, I mean.
So, so, does that apply, Duralast, but Boakson?
Boakson is Duralast, yeah, they're, they're.
They would be the installer?
They're, they're gonna be it all.
They would be where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, contract, I mean, the list of contractors under each one of these.
That are systems.
These folks here are main suppliers of these systems, so it funnels through them to a contractor. Contractor we act with, with those, one of those four companies.
If we would go with Duralast, Duralast could give us three different prices under them with three different.
Now, see, when we decide.
We'd have a further comparison on the same order.
So say, say we go, we go with Duralast, we say, okay, we're gonna go with it. Duralast will come out and get two more contractors, they come in and give us a price without giving folks a price out. Without giving folks right now, that's, see, that's why there's only one copy of that, okay? Because whatever we decide on, that way, we have two more contractors come in, bid on it, and then every, and then, see, Duralast comes in, they're the ones that handle the guarantee. The guarantee has, they pay for it, so they send inspectors out to make sure it's got according to their specifications because they gotta honor the warranty twenty years, right, okay? Yeah.
What's the warranty cover?
The warranty covers on that there ninety-nine percent. The only thing we gotta go up there and check on the termination bar, if the cockings come loose, just put some more cocking on, you know what I mean? Uh, any leak, anything that happens to it, if a pole, if the termination bar falls away from the wall, they'll come back and re-attach it, you know what I mean? With, with rubber, it's so easy that it goes up and is terminated, you know, and here's your part here, and here's, there ain't no place that you can't leave. You know what I'm saying? And it's so easy to make changes, that's all. Now they come out with this white roof, it's a wet, it's a heat, you know, in itself, helps us and help us with the heating and the cooling. Say, cool the building down, ten years, okay, it's five years. Okay, you're gonna have to reflect, you're gonna have the R factor on the roof. Plus, we have the insulation and the vent, middle school roof begin with, we have the insulation, okay?
What's this, what, they put a DL administration fee, what's that that they're charging?
Oh, because you're going through the state first. If you look on every one of them, it'll have that, that services, okay?
Who?
Uh, that's, you know, that's.
Who's going to sign those?
That's a great extended warranty.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that's where, yeah, that's what I want, remember? That's for twenty-year, for the twenty-year warranty on that. Cause I told them I wanted at least a twenty-year warranty on it. And cause they got, they got ten, fifteen, and twenty. And if you go with twenty, they will come out, okay?
So it's actually true, an extended warranty through a company?
Right.
That's contracted.
Contracted, they buy, they buy the contract, okay? So they will buy, sell the contract to somebody else, okay? Like right now, this roof is under Carper's out of Pittsburgh. When I have a leak in this high school, I call Carper's Roofing, they sent Boakson out to fix it, that's one of their people. But whatever system you people decide on doing, we will get more competitive bids, you know what I mean? We'll get other bids, but we want to give you the ideas of what, what, what there is out there, okay?
So state system.
This format or this option?
Yes, yes.
We're only considering tapered, is that correct?
I would tell you that we should, we should probably have tapered it.
If you're doing it.
Do it right the first time, right? And, and eliminate the ponding with a flat roof. You're, we're, we're sort of, uh.
This is seventy thousand dollars difference, that's it. Yeah.
That's what it is. So really under state-owned stuff.
Contracts or whatever, we eliminate the architect.
We're, we're not, they don't necessarily guarantee that the state's bid price is gonna be less, right?
No.
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 So it's up to us to be able to negotiate this price.
Right, 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 now, see, that's what they do, they will send their three other companies in and they will bid it. Their labor cost might be cheaper. But see, when you go with, with schools, what is that, when you go with this school, then you're, it's a prevailing wage. I'm sorry, that's, you have to pay prevailing wage when you go state term.
Right.
If you would go regular bidding, you know, then you could get, no, you, you know what I mean? You could get other people in here and everything else, but when you go, what is it, uh?
State, we have to do prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, we have, when you, when you deal with this program, you have prevailing wages, that's what.
If we go with this program.
If you go with this program. Now, the other option is, we can pull it back, we could, we could take steel, borrow their specs, specs, and, and bid it out that way.
We have to, we have to get it.
We have to.
You know, but then you have, then you have to, then we have to have somebody to scan on our kids there.
No, we can't, we can't simply on the school district take specs that these companies provide us.
I would like to do that, but they won't let me.
Jimmy would do that.
Okay, there's not any more questions?
So, so the company that's out of Michigan, that's the actual manufacturer?
What's that?
Correct.
Duralast, yeah, yeah, now, they're, they're like. Yeah, they're out of Michigan, say, Duralast has like six contractors in this area, okay? Yeah, they're, they're materials, okay? And that's why I only have, I only have one copy of these because when you decide, then we get, then they'll send the three people out, then we'll get fixed bids, okay? This is what it would be to hide it, okay? Okay, and I wanted to show you the different styles of roof.
You got it? Okay, so, that's a, a lot to absorb in a short, brief presentation. What we can do is this, if we decide to narrow down what direction we wanna go, or, or type, what types of roof, or whether we wanna even go state term, or whether we wanna try and venture off on ourselves. The advantage of going state term is the moment we decide what we want, where we go, they can roll it out most immediately, so timelines are very short. Um, if we go the other direction, we start to go, and we have to go through a bidding process to hire architects, and we have to go through, and, and some of you have been through that when we went through this whole process with Joshua Dixon. There are timelines on each of those in order to get everything in place before you go, so. The advantage of the state term potentially is, one, you know the price upfront, and two, it's, happens as soon as the weather breaks.
Yeah, so what's, what's the calendar window that you're looking?
See, it's gonna take, it's gonna take two and a half months to do that roof, okay? I got that from everybody, it's gonna take two and a half months to do it. And see, beans that part of the building is closed over there, they could start tomorrow, as long as it's snowing on the roof, you know what I mean? But that, I mean, as soon as the weather breaks, they could start.
Our, our problem with waiting is that we, we have some, some things we have to do with ceiling tile that we can't really do until the water stops. Um, so we need to fix those things over the summer. And if we have the roof over top, complete or fairly complete before summer, then we're, we're ready or potentially ready to move the fifth grade back to the middle school, back to our middle school concept. So the sooner we can get work done on the roof, the better. Um, you know, it's a gamble probably to triangle out on their own, whether you can, whether you're gonna pay prevailing wages or not, it just depends on the companies and who bids. You know, they're gonna come in with their low price, and then you go through a bidding process and whether or not you're gonna get a better price than what this is. You might.
Well, this is still a motion, isn't it?
To some extent, yeah.
So, so what's the, what's the benefit to, to using the, the state, state term?
The state's determined what the best pricing is under these companies?
Yeah, they're locked into the square footage prices, they can't charge you more. So they're locked in.
This is the same program that the city buy the police cars from, and, you know what I mean? They're locked in at certain prices, that's, that's what the state, yeah.
We, we bought buses in a similar scenario because we, we had locked-in prices that we could go with, which we didn't have to go through and try and bid against folks to, to, to try and get bus prices dropped, but.
Now, going this route, you're probably cutting at least four months off of the process.
That's what I'm saying, probably.
Three, minimum, four months.
Best case, well, when would you wanna see it finished?
July, July or autumn, ask me, July, to get, to get that building prepared underneath. You know, we could get one, we could get, like, if they do the north end, we can do the north end while they're doing the south end, you know what I mean? So we'll only have one wing to do the last two, three weeks, so that shouldn't be no problem.
You're saying two and a half months, where I was thinking, does that mean they can start in April?
If they, they.
You had none of the west end.
We already did.
I'm just saying.
We could really hit the south side hard to get it ready to go. Um, so what does that mean? There's, there's really three hallways, one left, two hallways for most part. That fifth and sixth grade hallway that goes all the way down, and then the one that goes up front of the office, um, into the seventh and eighth grade wing, um, including the choir room, those are the, those are the section. But now, we're also gonna do the seventh and eighth grade because it's really not that far off from where the rest of the building is. We're, we're, we're literally within a time of potentially that starting to leak now too, so.
Are you thinking you have like another month's worth of work?
Wait till the snow comes.
No, you have, post.
At the.
Post roof repair of the interior.
Well, how long, how long do you need to take care of the?
I mean, you see, if we're gonna, if we're moving the fifth grade back there, I mean, we will get, we will start here in the high school, and it takes us about three weeks to get everything done in that building over there, okay? But we're gonna have to be moving stuff back and you know what I mean? So, you know, it might be, it might be a month, you know what I mean? It might be five weeks, as, you know, to get that all accomplished, to get the cleaning and everything ready.
And then we gotta do the ceiling.
But we're gonna do the ceilings and the floors, you know what I mean? Wash everything down.
You know, the ceiling tile can be done.
Leaving to the high school.
Little bit at a time too. In other words, we wanna get it out of, get that musky snow out too, but, but knowing that the water's not coming in any longer, we could potentially do some weekends once school starts and do sections of the building a little bit at a time as well in terms of ceiling tile, that doesn't have to actually be done. The floors and everything have to be done, and any repair work that has to be done will have to be done. So you're saying that if we go the traditional route, we're gonna bid for an architect. We're then going to put together a project, the architect will, will then bid for the construction. So the chances of going by the state route, we're much more likely to be able to have the fifth grade moved back and the building opened in the fall. I would say you're more likely because of timelines, we have a good timeline. But it doesn't mean that going the other, other way, we're not gonna get that done either because potentially we can get that done. The problem is, is when they're working on certain sections of that, if it's opened up, we're not gonna be able to get people in there to get the cleaning done. Those are just considerations as you guys move forward and as we start to think, and that's why we started. And that's why we started looking at state term, because we felt like there was a pretty quick turnaround in, in getting maybe a very similar cost at the end of the day as what we would get here.
There's a peak, what would it cost? About $500,000 as well, or more?
Which one?
A peak.
That'll be a million.
Oh, no, we're talking about, about, yeah, 1.5 million. Or, or, uh, or more.
That's the garlic?
No.
No, no, that, 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 you're talking about pitch.
Right, that's why we were doing the bond issue, to go that pitch, because right now, Joshua Dixon, we, we have no concerns about roof.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in a good shape with Joshua Dixon, so...
See, the bid, the pitched roof is, that, that's a perfect scenario. If we, we'd put it on there, you wouldn't have the problem. With this flat roof, to renovate that and put a pitched roof on it, it's just, uh, it's just very expensive, very...
The, the difference with the pitched roof option was that we were able to put a pitched roof over Joshua Dixon and not, not completely remove the integrity of the roof that was underneath it. So there were still some R-value underneath that, because we didn't completely tear it off. It's not exposed to that metal. So there, there was some advantages, and even if there were a potential leak, all of the drainage system is still intact on the flat roof below that pitched roof. So it's almost like a double protection for us right now with Joshua Dixon. And that's what we were hoping to do with Southside, which is not going to happen unless we go on a bond, pass a bond issue.
But the reason why I got this, we're all wanting to get all the, all the systems that are out there, let you make the decision, and tell us which way you want to go, and we'll get you the prices. That's the only thing I want, okay?
Any more questions?
Can you get all your janitors up there to do this?
No. That's a sure react. You're done with me now.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you, Jimmy.
You're welcome.
So I want to give you an update on Great Lakes Biomedical. I know, two meetings ago, we had them in here. Last meeting, we talked about where we were headed next. We had a committee meeting, and thank Mrs. Whitmore for being part of that committee. And we, I think we've made some progress in the fact that I think we, we, you really need to, to move forward. You know, some of the feedback was that it's a great idea, it gives kids a reason to say no. There's some self-recording options in here for, for testing. Board members need to be invested and involved in this when we roll out, to parents. And that kids may choose not, not to attend here, potentially, if, if we do this kind of a program. And that, I think the coaches will be on board, provided it's not targeting athletes, you know, that we're, we're committed to moving forward with a program that's all-encompassing for our extracurricular activities. And I know that's on the, the Great Lakes rolled out for us. You know, what grade levels, you know, do we begin? There's some, some details that I think need to be worked out as to where do we start? You know, my initial was, let's start with, when we compete inters-classic, which is seventh grade. That's a very natural beginning point. That's a point in which
It's explanatory.
young adolescent students will begin making decisions as young adults. And, uh, not necessarily being adult, but as young people making, making more and more decisions. You know, I think we need to, to probably potentially move forward with another committee meeting to roll out exactly how should this look? And so that you have a better idea as to the recommendations that Great Lakes put forward, how do we want Columbia to move forward with this? So, that's part of that. I think the next step is another committee meeting. I think you, you should probably be able to have some information by next meeting this, so that you feel pretty comfortable as to where we would go with this. So, again, I think we want to have some open forum potential and provide for everyone. As a parent myself, students and athletes, I think it's, it's a tremendous opportunity to, to make sure we're, we're all on the same page in what our kids are doing. I, I, believe me, I'd be the first person to step forward and, and test right with them. You know, if the board wants that to happen, by all means, I'll absolutely make that happen. And I just, I believe in it as, as an athlete myself, and a young person in extracurricular activities. I just believe that you should be doing things the right way. They got long, long, long lives to lead, and I just see so many, so many getting caught up in the nonsense of, of drugs and alcohol, so...
I think one of the things that we talked about in that committee meeting to stress was that to let, to let the public know that, and the kids know that, this just gives you a reason to say no. It's going to, it's going to help you, because a lot of times, you know, we want to put it as positively as, as possible to everybody. And I think that, you know, having a forum and inviting, you know, the public and the school and, and all the students and administration, so they have the information right along with, with everyone else. I think that's key to making it successful.
You know, and I think that the, the key to this whole thing is, is the first opportunity that this takes place, the, the communication goes directly to the parent and to the point of contact in the district. And no one else.
No one else, right.
And, and, and that's a real key component to this, because moms and dads don't always know what, what's happening. We all like, we think we know.
But we don't. And it gives them the choice to, to deal with it, you know, personally, within their family.
When they start getting in the car and driving, they're making a lot more decisions than, than we, we think they're making. So, that's where we are. I'll, I'll hopefully have a continued update for you by the next meeting, or, or at least something to you that's going to really be the nuts and bolts of where we are with this.
So are you saying that when you said input, are you planning on holding through the committee or through the board an open forum, which would mean a meeting for parents that have some concerns, or what?
I think both. I think the first, we have to have, we need to know exactly how we want it to roll out. And I think that that committee, who's invested some time in this, needs to really get their hands around this and lay this out, because we've been under a zero-tolerance policy. And that zero-tolerance policy is not helping kids.
It's just eliminating them.
Yeah, so, and it all comes under suspicion and confirmation, and did they, did it say? And, and the, the administration, and, and puts the board in a position that we're making decisions not having 100%
Well, the other thing with this policy is that it gives them the opportunity to be part of. Like, they, they, it's with the zero-tolerance, you're just literally, you're not helping anyone. You're not giving them any options. This way, it gives everybody the, and it's, this way, people don't have to deal with it differently. There's, there, this is the way we're going to do things, there's rules, and then it makes it across the board fair for everybody involved, because it's, it's one policy and we just follow it. Instead of everybody making their own as we go. Oh, well, this is this, so this scenario is different because of this. No, this is our policy, and this is what we're going to do.
Okay. Summer story, you're probably wondering what that was all about. Here, here's the, uh, here's the scenario. I wanted to recognize one of our programs that goes, that flies under the radar, and that's our speech and debate program. Our speech and debate program is among one of the very best in the area, and I, I have to attribute that to our coach. Trish Nord has put a team of coaches together that includes her mom, Pam Pisa, her sister, Deanna Pisa, and a former student, Angela Rosen. And they have really grown this program from a point at which in 2007, they began back up with five students, to now 29. And 15 of them have qualified this, this year to go to the state tournament, with another qualifying round this weekend for an opportunity for more to qualify to go to the state, uh, meet. And that's incredible. That's absolutely incredible. Little bit about, uh, the coaching staff. Pam Pisa's been coaching speech for over 25 years. She was a coach of Cardinal Mooney and also of Poland. She's had eight state champions, seven runner-ups, and coached a student to fourth in the nation. Very lucky to have her. Deanna Pisa, she's currently at YSHU studying special education, and been coaching for four years here under, under Trish Nord. And she has had a state finalist in the humor area. Angela Rosen was a member of Columbia High School's speech team. She's been coaching for three years, and she's had three national qualifiers and a state finalist in international extent, extent. Trish Nord is our head coach. She teaches ninth grade English for us. She's been coaching for 13 years. She, she coached at Poland for six years, and has been here coaching for seven. She's coached seven dual teams in the state final round, has qualified seven dual teams in the national tournament. Has had two dual teams that make up, uh, make it to the top 30 of the national level. Absolutely incredible. You know, I don't know, it could be all family, maybe, for them, but, uh, they, uh, they, they've really done a tremendous job. And, and part of it, you see these kids walking around our hallways, and they're talking to, they're going, they're doing their speech. You know, they're staring at a locker doing a speech. It's incredible stuff. And they're here from after school till six, seven, eight at night, every night, working to get better at that. And they, they, they love it. Their coaches really helped them blossom. And, you know, my hats go off to, to Trish Nord and the, and the coaching team she's put together with, with her, part of her family, and how she attracts kids into speech program. State qualifiers, I'd like to recognize, and I took a little bit of this thunder from Lance, because I wanted to recognize them, because I really felt like, you know, what, we, we talk about our football teams, our basketball teams, our, our track, and baseball, and softball, and how these, these folks make it to statewide. Here's a group of kids that are sort of a co-curricular extra activity that's going to, that's going to help them at the next level when they leave Columbia High School to be tremendous communicators. And, uh, and these folks are going to state. They qualified already. 15, 15 different students in duos, Katie Schall and Brad Kaler. Duos, I'll put it up there for you. Haley Martin, Brianna Davis. Also in duo, Zach Fringer and Sarah Hunter. US extent, 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 Brandon Cannon. IS extent, Bruce Wiggins, also in the same category, like Cooper. In humor, Logan Vertollet. In humor, Cheyenne Carr, Drama, Cassie Mead. In original, Harmon Finn. Also in the same category, original, Alan Reshi. And rhetorical, Connor Witherell. You know what? These kids are working hard at it every day, and, uh, if, if you see them around, they need a pat on the back, and I've been seeing them lately and just saying, "Good job, congratulations." It's tremendous, tremendous honor to, to, to do these things. And Trish Nord and her team of coaches have done a great, great job. And that's all I have for you.
That's all?
Thank you very much. Item 7, Nutrition Report.
Okay, this is reports for December's. It was a very short month, and it was very busy. We had a lot of special caterings going on for the high school. We did, um, luncheon for the high school students. I carved a ham. And Joshua Dixon, of course, they have way too many students, so we prepared a special lunch for them as well. Mrs. Shershen got together, her and I got together, and she wanted to do something special for the teachers every year. She likes to do something special for them, and we had a waffle bar. Normally, I have a waffle bar for the students at the high school. And, um, that's a really big issue there. They love the waffles. And Mrs. Shershen, her and I made the waffles that day, and it really went over. They're really looking forward to tasting cabbage. I'm sorry, I forgot the name of it now. But they're really looking forward to tasting that as well, so it's something, it's been a big hit this year for us. Our numbers for lunches have kind of gone, especially for December, because we don't have that many days in December.
Yeah, well, snow days in January.
In January, yeah, that, that, next month, that'll be a rule, yes. So, I also like to talk about Wellness Wednesday. I know, I received phone calls myself. Students at Joshua Dixon love it. They love to come up, take samples. We offer every month a different sample. And I had a little student that went home and was upset, because we tried to reschedule it in, and being with the snow days, it just got canceled. They wanted to know, "Why am I backing out on my nutrition wellness?" And I was like, "Because of the days we..." I'm sorry. So, it is tomorrow Wellness Wednesday, so if you're interested in stopping by at Joshua Dixon, it'll go on from 11 o'clock to 1:15. My presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 7. Let me, uh, let me explain why item 7 is on there. Just, I think many of you probably have read some of the changes in the legislation, legislature. With a school moving to ours, part of what will be required to do here in the future is to provide public input on the school calendar. So we're doing that now as a first-round option this year, next year. This will be something happening probably closer to January instead of February, so that we can get our calendar approved in a, in a February timeline. So, next month, you can, uh, you can count on having a calendar to, in front of you to look over, and it's most likely going to be very similar to the one we have this year. Very good. Item number 8. Don't think we need a first executive session, do we, Mrs. Whitmore?
No.
Item number 9. Somebody need to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh, consider, let's say, consider approval for the January 2014 financial report.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Aaron?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Whitmore?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 10.
I'd like to make a motion for a consent agenda for items 10 through 20.
I second it.
Discussion.
No.
Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Motion passes. That takes us all the way to President's Report. I guess I'd just like to take a couple minutes and congratulate all of the kids, all of the students that are doing so well. Fourth grade girls' basketball team, that was a massive trophy, or actually a plaque we saw, and that's great to see how well they've done. Fifth grade spelling bee, that's always good to see how well the kids do and how interested they are in that. Southside Middle School, geography bee, I think that's pretty neat. And I think it's good that they get good participation in that. It sounds like the science fair was a success, so we want to congratulate everybody there. It sounds like the science fair was a success, so we wanna congratulate everybody there. And to see the girls' basketball team, seventh grade and eighth grade, it sounds like that our high school coach has a good group that's coming up, and it's great to see that they're both doing so well in the tournament. High schools. First of all, speech and debate, my own, one of my own children was involved in that several years ago, and it was a good program then with a lot of interest, so I'm really glad to see Mrs. Nord has taken that over and taken the ball and run with it. That is so important, and it is something that kids do not graduate from high school, I'll go further, from college, knowing how to speak. A lot of kids today are losing the ability to talk one-on-one to people. Speech and debate is a great program, they're gonna get confidence in front of people, they'll learn how to do a lot, and I think it's great to see that it's going so well. The solo ensemble, I really think that's great to congratulate those kids for all the interest and all the time they spend in music. I know how much time that takes, and I think they're to be congratulated. That would be the end of my report. Thank you, everyone that's here. Next item. I'm not sure what item that is, maybe Kelly might be able to tell me what it is.
22, OSBA legislative liaison report?
No report.
Item number 23.
23, the OSBA student student liaison report, there's no report. 24, Montana County Career Center Board Member Report.
Well, I do have a little bit of report. The Career Center is about ready to reopen the restaurant. We had a board dinner down there for our January meeting, the food was excellent, actually, Dawn and Mike and I attended the county school board's workshops at the restaurant, at the restaurant, and I'll tell you what, the food was excellent. So I think that's gonna be a great addition to the Career Center, they're also getting ready to open up their coffee shop, which will be there mainly for the adult education students in the evenings. That's the end of my report. Item 25, date of next board meeting, March 11, 2014, 6:30 PM here in the high school media center. Item 26.
I make a motion to consider a next executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22, for the sole purpose of the consideration of any of the following matters as listed below.
I'll second that. Any discussion of the items to be discussed are for at any executive, or executive session. Discipline, compensation, employment, investigation of charges, complaints, and matters required to be kept confidential by federal and/or state laws, rules, or state statutes. Roll call.
Whitmore?
Yes.
Rocker?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Item 27, which I don't imagine you will come back. Motion passed.